Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 26, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayor Proton Polika?
Here.
Councilmember Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I would like to approve the agenda, or make a motion to approve the agenda with the following addition. Item 7E, the appointment of Jennifer Childs to the Board of Review.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Polika, supported by Piana. Any discussion on the amended agenda? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. As amended, the next item of business is a presentation, one of our favorite things that we do all year, and that is we get to hear from a contingent of the Ferndale High School Spring Musical Preview Performance. So, how are we going to do this? But the stage is yours. Are you going to go and watch it from there? Okay. They offered it if you wanted to watch it from the other side. I don't know. There's something fun about watching it back here. And does someone want to introduce to the public what you guys are doing this year? Awesome.
I will. All right. Hello, my name is Melissa Smith, and I am the Theater Arts Instructor at Ferndale High School and Ferndale Middle School, and I'm also an instructor over at CASA. And I'm happy to introduce several members of our cast as our narrators. We have Jennifer Decker. Oh, I just called Jessica Decker. I apologize. I was getting Jenna and Jessica. I got them. We got another Decker in there, too, but it's not Jennifer. She doesn't exist. Victoria Shute. Jackson Mead. Adelaide Wilson. Elliot Reed. And I'm going to mess up Simon's last name, so I'm going to let him say it.
Simon Vermeerish Bacon.
See why? Okay. And Sidney Meadows. And Joseph. And Nafali. And Pharaoh. And Ruben. And Judah. Some of the brothers. If you're familiar, Joseph is the story of Joseph and his amazing dreams from the Old Testament, set to music by Andrew Lloyd Webber and Tim Rice. And I guess without further ado, I'd just like to say the show opens on March 17th, so please come celebrate your St. Patrick's Day with us. Can't think of anything better than a good Old Testament story set to music on St. Patrick's Day. Right? I mean, come on. All right? I'm going to pass these off.
Narrators will start. Thank you very much.
All right.
Some folks dream of the wonders they'll do before their time on this planet is through. Some just don't have anything planned. They hide their hopes and their heads in the sand. Well, I don't say who is wrong, who is right, but if by chance you are here for the night, then all I need is an hour or two to tell the tale of a dreamer like you. All dream a lot, some are lucky, some are not. But if you think it, want it, dream it, then it's real. You are what you feel. But all that I say can be told another way in a story of a boy whose dream came true, and it could be you.
I closed my eyes to back the curtain to see for certain what I thought I knew. Far, far away, someone was weeping, but the world was sleeping. Any dream will do. I wore my coat with golden lining, bright colors shining, wonderful and new. And in the east, the dawn was breaking, and the world was waking. Any dream will do. A crash of drums, a flash of light, my golden coat flew out of sight. The colors faded into darkness, I was left alone. May I return to the beginning? The light is dimming, and the dream is too. The world and I, we are still waiting, still hesitating. Any dream will do.
Father, we've come to tell you a story of our time. A tragic but inspiring tale of manhood in its prime. You know you had a dozen sons, well, now that's not quite true. But feel no sorrow, do not grieve, he would not want you to. There's one more angel in heaven, there's one more star in the sky. Joseph, the things that you stood for, it's tough, but we're gonna get by. There's one less place at our table, there's one more tear in my eye. But Joseph, the things that you stood for, like truth and light never die.
I was walking along the banks of the riverway. Seven fat cows came out of their nylon. And right behind these fine, healthy animals came seven other cows that were skinny and vile. The thing I was ate the fat, 'cause yes, they came up right behind, yes, they did. But it didn't make them fat like I thought a monster supper should. And the thing I was worried and say it ever, 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 ever been. This dream has got me all shook up, but treat me nice and tell me what you mean. Do you remember the good days in Canaan? Their summers were endlessly gold. Fields were a patchwork of clover. Their winters were never too cold. We strolled down their boulevard together, and everything round us was fine. Now their fields are dead and bare, no joy de vivre anywhere. In Montinand, we drink a bitter wine. In the days we used to know, where have they gone? Where did they go? Eh bien, raise your berets to those Canaan days.
How you can accuse them is a mystery. Save him, take me. Benjamin is straighter than the big bamboo. No ifs, no buts. Benjamin is honest as coconuts.
Yeah, that was awesome.
This is Kim Schroeder, who is our vocal coach. We'll all miss together for us today. Thank you.
And we have two weekends that we have, so it'll be 17 and 18, and then the following weekend is still travel. So we'll be all there. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for coming. That's awesome. What a talented group of folks. Thank you so much. March 17th to March 25th. Get your tickets now at Ferndale High School. Awesome. Although I didn't see the dream coat. I guess you got to go to the actual. Very nice. All right, I don't know how we follow that, but there may be somebody in the audience who is brave enough to follow the Ferndale High School kids. This is our time on the agenda for the call to audience. This is your opportunity, if you're here with us in the audience, to speak to council and address us on any issue that you like that's not on the agenda, because we'll let you have a chance to talk to that when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you'd like to come up and address council, you get three minutes to do so, so come on up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and talk to council about anything you would like.
Good evening. Good evening. Tom Teruzzi, I live at 346 West Breckenridge Street. I just had a quick question. I just arrived home, and there's signs all along West Breckenridge, near the corner of Plantaven for no parking. And I called the city police, not emergency number, and they didn't have any notification why those are up, but it had the Ferndale F. on them, and said, "No parking Tuesdays." And I didn't see anything posted anywhere or why those are up.
Lloyd, you don't know. Lloyd's our director of DPW. You're not aware. Joe, that doesn't sound familiar to you. Chief, does that doesn't sound familiar to you? So since, anybody, nobody? Since we're all wondering, we'll certainly take your information and look into it for you, because apparently that doesn't ring a bell for folks.
But I don't know what that is.
Wow. It's not very often you stump the staff. You ought to get a prize for that, I think. But yes, please share your contact information, and we'll look into it. That's curious. There's the chief, he's wondering what the heck's...
Those are paper?
Yeah.
They're paper signs?
Oh, they're like lawn signs.
Lawn signs, yeah.
Lawn signs?
Yeah.
Oh, that is, I think it was a road sign.
Road signs, just because it's all street parking there, and it takes out...
It could be someone's taking the lawn to their own hand. We'll look into it and get back with you, because they shouldn't be doing that either. So, yeah.
So I can park there, and I will not get a parking ticket. That's pretty much what I'm getting at.
The chief says yes, right? No tickets.
Unless anybody's got any objection, I like the four.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Yeah. That's a curious one. All right, so did you...
The whole truck bed is for special events to make sure that there isn't something we missed.
Okay. Yep. All right. Good evening. We're playing stump the staff tonight. You got anything?
Try not to do so. Okay, hi. My name is Frank Mercica.
Hi, Frank.
I live at 1424 Northway Street in Ferndale. I've lived here for 18 years. My house is situated just south of the high school parking lot. Now, I said I've lived here 18 years. I live by the high school. I like living there. Just, you know, I just love the activity. I love seeing the students come and go.
You buying your tickets to the show?
Yeah. My neighbors and I, we enjoy the Friday night nights, right? And we all sit on my neighbor's porch and sing the National Anthem and listen to the football game and everything. So I'm really attached to the high school. So naturally, I'm concerned about what's going on, you know, with the safety and security of our high school.
Yes.
I don't, I'm not here to ask questions, you know, ask for solutions or anything like that. I'm just here to offer. I don't know where this is going to go, but I know, you know, it's got to go somewhere. And I just wanted to offer, as a veteran, I wanted to just stand before you and offer my service. I'm semi-retired right now. You know, I'm always at home. And whatever I could do, whether it be, I don't know if you're going to decide to put additional armed security in the school, we don't know. I mean, it's being talked with county, state, federal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But my name and address is in the back. If you guys need me to do anything, I would appreciate that you contacted me.
Well, Frank, I really appreciate you coming. Thank you for your service in the military, by the way. And I don't know exactly what will happen.
Yeah, no one does.
It's technically under the control of the school board, and so we don't direct that, but we talk to them a lot.
Right, of course.
Honestly, I was going to point to Joe, but maybe there's someone else that we can capture your information. Just, the chief, if you just would, if you wouldn't mind, or point out your name on there, so he can capture, just in case we hear of anything, or we talk to the schools and they're interested, I really appreciate your offer.
Okay, because, listen, you know, I'm a veteran. I'm sworn to protect the people of this country.
Thank you. And you're in a position to keep an eye on the building, so we appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't want to, I would, you know, hate to think to the point where, you know, because I hear everything.
Yeah.
And I would hate to think to the point if I ever heard gunshots or anything, that I would, armed or unarmed, I would still run into that school.
Thank you.
And I'd do what I could.
I appreciate it.
And I would happily give my life for these students.
If I may, Joe, I just want to thank you for stating that. I mean, I have children in those schools, so I appreciate you even coming up and offering your services.
We just need to have a solution, that's all. We have to end it. It has to end. We can do it. I know we can do it. I don't know what the problem is, whether it's just how far it goes into, whether it's, you know, medicines, violence in videos, violence in movies. I'm not one to say so, but all those things, of course, are concerning. And, you know, as a kid that graduated in the '70s, it was just totally different, you know? And I was in Canton, it wasn't even really a suburb there. It was almost rural at the time, and we never had to think about those things when we were kids. And it just tears me up to think, not only do they have such pressure just to succeed as being a student, to further their lives, but to have to think in the back of their heads what could possibly happen. And, you know, I just hope, you know, that these kids have somewhere to go, someone to go to, you know, just to talk, or if they think somebody is threatening even a little bit, if they notice something on social media, or if they notice something, that they have someone that they could, you know, go to, you know, privately. And I just don't know, I'll just go back to whatever I can do for you people, please. I'm there for you, all right?
Very well said, and thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Hey. My name's Ben Migdal. I'm actually a resident of Washtenaw County.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you've had folks come in and inquire about this particular update of Michigan, but I'm actually here pursuing sort of a dream. I joined a development group based out of Chicago. We're pursuing a medical cannabis provisioning license. I'm well aware that the ordinance is not complete here. However, I'd like to stay on top of as much municipal action as possible. I'm a native Michigander who's spent the last five years or so out in Denver, Colorado. I've attained, out in Denver, I got a master's in business administration, as well as an MSF, master's in finance, and really just kind of saw the whole benefits of what happened out there, and really would like to kind of stay in the loop with you guys and in the loop with the community here to be as responsible as possible with our approach. We are currently pursuing properties in the M-1 Limited and M-2 General Industrial Zones, and we want to stress, kind of echoing the sentiment of the gentleman who just spoke, as much compliance and responsibility with the community as we can possibly have. We're interested in staying in touch with the Environmental Sustainability Commission to possibly be able to sponsor events, give back in that regard, as well as the Planning Commission. I'm here to work hand in hand and take as much feedback as possible for how we can go about this the most professional and responsible way, and ultimately with the goal of adding value of genuine continuity to the community.
Excellent. Well, first of all, welcome, all the way from Washtenaw County. Great to have you here.
Thank you, thank you.
Have you touched base at all with Jordan Tordy, our Director of Community and Economic Development?
I have not.
Okay, so he's here, he's raising his hand over there, and that I would suggest starting with him, because we are going to discuss participating in the medical marijuana licenses, probably in, are we looking at April now-ish is probably the timeframe? And so Jordan has taken the lead from a staff perspective in helping to formulate that recommendation, and just sort of oversee the industry in general in Ferndale. So he would be a great person for you to start to be connected with. And then he could help, and you can explore, you mentioned the FESE, the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability, and the Planning Commission. So he could connect you to them where that makes sense, as you talk through those opportunities with him, but he'd be a great resource to start with.
Great. Appreciate that.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless someone from council pulls something for the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and work session held February 12, 2018. Item B is the approval to purchase the Paratek Multi-Force Bag Kit for $7,950 from First Due Fire Supply to be paid from the operating supplies account. Item C is the approval to submit 2019 Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, applications, as submitted by our planning manager. Item D is the approval of the Ben Zinsky &amp; Company Municipal Finance Advisors to serve as registered municipal advisors for the issuance of Parking Bond Engagement Letter. Item E is the approval to confirm the appointments of Austin Colson as an alternate to a, from an alternate to a regular member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Robert Porter from a regular member of the Boarding and Zone Appeals to an alternate. Item F is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
A move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Now, any discussion, either from council or anyone here in this hall? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Polika?
Yes.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, we have five items now that we've amended the agenda. Item A is a consideration to appoint Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 1, 2020. Heather, do you want to introduce that item and introduce Jeannie? Not that she needs any introduction, but...
Yeah, I really didn't prepare anything, because I figured she didn't need an introduction.
She doesn't. You could just sort of generally tell us how many members you have, you're one bar short, whatever you want to say.
I am thrilled to hopefully welcome Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission to take over Melissa DeSilva's term that was vacated a few months back. She moved out of state. So we're just thrilled to have her be part of our team and help us move forward in such an exciting way. She's shown herself to be such a dedicated advocate for the community and just has tirelessly served in so many roles, and we're so happy that she'll be part of our crew, so...
We'll be the judge of that.
I think it's trouble.
She's my kind of trouble.
Jeannie, do you have anything to say for yourself? I mean, would you like to say anything? You don't have to.
You know what? I really am honored, and hopefully I can help and fill a little niche, particularly with the seniors, because that is, you know, my area.
Great. All right.
Thank you for serving.
Is there a motion?
A move that we confirm the appointment of Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 1, 2020.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Now, any comments, questions, interrogations?
Against my better judgment, no kidding.
I will bite my tongue.
You know, while they all make jokes, kidding aside, Jeannie has a great capacity to understand bylaws and making, provide support for vision and strategic planning of organizations. So I really appreciate your point of view on this and helping out our director. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And agreed, all kidding aside, as the president of the seniors, it's a great voice to be heard on the housing commission, where there are a number of seniors that live there, and so I think you're going to be an awesome member, and I appreciate your willingness to serve.
And I think it'll help facilitate, encourage the engagement of the residents into the seniors group even more, so. I know that's been a goal of yours for some time, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. There's, it breaks my heart that the Smart Bus doesn't go and pick up a busload of seniors for our meetings. They're free, there's a $3 lunch after, there's no reason for that not to happen, and I understand they don't know the content of our meetings, so I'm certainly going to be changing that.
I bet.
See, she's causing trouble already. Good trouble, in a good way. All right, any other discussion?
Just, I just want to thank Jeannie Davis for always stepping up to the plate whenever we ask. You never say no to us, so we appreciate it.
Aw, thank you, Greg.
All right. All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polika?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, we have five items now that we've amended the agenda. Item A is a consideration to appoint Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 1, 2020. Heather, do you want to introduce that item and introduce Jeannie? Not that she needs any introduction, but...
Yeah, I really didn't prepare anything, because I figured she didn't need an introduction.
She doesn't. You could just sort of generally tell us how many members you have, you're one bar short, whatever you want to say.
I am thrilled to hopefully welcome Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission to take over Melissa DeSilva's term that was vacated a few months back. She moved out of state. So we're just thrilled to have her be part of our team and help us move forward in such an exciting way. She's shown herself to be such a dedicated advocate for the community and just has tirelessly served in so many roles, and we're so happy that she'll be part of our crew, so...
We'll be the judge of that.
I think it's trouble.
She's my kind of trouble.
Jeannie, do you have anything to say for yourself? I mean, would you like to say anything? You don't have to.
You know what? I really am honored, and hopefully I can help and fill a little niche, particularly with the seniors, because that is, you know, my area.
Great. All right.
Thank you for serving.
Is there a motion?
A move that we confirm the appointment of Jeannie Davis to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 1, 2020.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Now, any comments, questions, interrogations?
Against my better judgment, no kidding.
I will bite my tongue.
You know, while they all make jokes, kidding aside, Jeannie has a great capacity to understand bylaws and making, provide support for vision and strategic planning of organizations. So I really appreciate your point of view on this and helping out our director. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And agreed, all kidding aside, as the president of the seniors, it's a great voice to be heard on the housing commission, where there are a number of seniors that live there, and so I think you're going to be an awesome member, and I appreciate your willingness to serve.
And I think it'll help facilitate, encourage the engagement of the residents into the seniors group even more, so. I know that's been a goal of yours for some time, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. There's, it breaks my heart that the Smart Bus doesn't go and pick up a busload of seniors really well-selected group, so thank you.
Yeah, Barb did a great job. She totally looked them all up herself and took the initiative to contact them. In her time with the Community Development Department, she's made a lot of connections with the business community, and I will pass that along to her. Very proud of her work here.
Thank you.
If I may add, all of them have a significant time invested in our community, so they're familiar with our community over many, many years.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Porten Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on now, regular agenda. Item C is a consideration to add a rider to our current B.C. Blue Cross Blue Shield policies to provide medical coverage for individuals with autism. And our newest member of the team, our HR director is here to introduce that item. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In keeping with the city of Ferndale's culture of providing a healthy work-life balance, we recommend adding a rider to the city's Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Plan that would add autism coverage for individual members with autism to age 18. A little bit of background here, in the 2016-2017 school year, 19,632 students met eligibility as a student with Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD. There are approximately 50,000 individuals living in Michigan that have ASD. One in 68 children in the United States has ASD. ASD occurs in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups. ASD is the fastest-growing serious developmental disability in the United States. 65% of parents reported that their child with ASD has been bullied. 25% of individuals with ASD are non-verbal. As you can imagine, it takes significant time and resources to care for an individual with autism. As a point of reference here, the city started looking into this benefit about a year or two ago, but was unable to gain a confident estimate of what it would cost to cover it. Cornerstone, our Blue Cross Blue Shield administrator, has recently provided us with that number, and the cost to add this coverage is between $13,000 to $26,000 annually. So that's it.
If I may, questions or clarification through the chair?
Sure.
First off, is there an additional administration fee that gets tacked on for adding the autism rider?
There is not.
Okay. And why does that benefit cap out at age 18 when we cover dependents to 26?
I don't think there's an option to make that go any longer. The standard provision from the autism... There's actually a law for fully insured plans in Michigan?
Right.
That require it to age 18, but I can absolutely look into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
See if we can do it longer.
And is that the difference because we're a self-insured plan, that it's not mandated?
We're not required?
Absolutely right. In 2012, the state of Michigan made it required for fully insured plans, but we're self-insured, and that's covered by the federal rules.
Gotcha.
I was going to... Yes. I just appreciate you having this add-on. I'm an aunt of a nephew with autism, and those services can get quite expensive for the family, so just knowing that Ferndale is kind of trying to make it easier on these families, I think it's commendable, so thank you for doing that.
Well, and thank you. And you know, the other thing, as you know, once you have insurance, you get discounts, so it's much more expensive to have the services if you don't have insurance than it is once you do have insurance, too.
From my perspective, I just want to say that I'm not an expert with health insurance, so I'm kind of surprised that this just isn't part of medical plans, you know? There's so many things that are automatically included. I guess I would have thought that this would have been something that just is part of any kind of medical plan, so...
To clarify, it's fully funded, it is required, but under ERISA, which is what we're regulated, it's not, because these aren't necessarily traditional services. This isn't the primary care physician visit. This is the extended speech occupational therapy, stuff that isn't covered in usual plans.
Gotcha, okay.
Prior to this legislation.
Well, still, to me, that's an overeager.
No, I agree. I'm not arguing.
Is there a motion?
I move to add the rider to our current Blue Cross Blue Shield policies to provide medical coverage for individuals with autism.
Support.
All right, now, further comments, questions, discussion?
I just have one comment through the chair, if I may. For the past six years, I've abstained from any vote relating to Blue Cross Blue Shield because of a conflict of interest. My employment relationship has changed, so I will be voting on this tonight.
All right, great. Yep, that's right. And I will say, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I also, I don't think we treat mental health and behavioral health services the same as we do physical health services, so... And I don't know why, other than the fear of the cost, and I appreciate that we were able to pin down the cost and understand that it's, you know, it's going to be manageable, and it's an important service that should be treated just like any physical or other kind of illness, so I'm happy to do this. Is there anyone, by the way, from the public, I should ask, that wants to address council on this issue? I neglected to say that. Okay. Other comments or questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Porten Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, sir. Well done for your first trip to the podium. The next item of business, regular agenda, item D is a consideration to set liquor license renewal public hearing for March 26. Who's going to introduce that item?
I can do that.
It's pretty straightforward, but yes.
Yeah. So every year, all the full year liquor licenses expire on April 30. Over the past few decades, we have required that a public hearing be held for businesses that are not in compliance, meaning that they have outstanding monies owing to the city for perhaps taxes or water bills or cleanup or that kind of thing, or there's a number of other criteria that can be considered as well. So this is the first step in that process. The public hearing is requested to be held on March 26, 2018, to give the people who are not in compliance a few days before that April 1 deadline to still make amends if they can do so. So we are asking tonight that that public hearing be scheduled for the 26th, and we will have the city attorney's office prepare and serve the proper legal notice after the end of the month, when taxes are due, is when we start really compiling who owes what, since they have till February 28 to pay all their taxes. So we get a report from finance afterwards, and we'll be compiling that list and getting it to Dan.
I move to direct that a public hearing to be scheduled for Monday, March 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. regarding the non-renewal of Class C liquor licenses, and that the city attorney's office prepare and have served appropriate legal notice of the scheduled hearing to any establishments that are not in compliance with the provisions of the Ferndale City Council's resolution adopted on March 28, 1988, as attached, and that those establishments that are delinquent and paying taxes or water bills that were due by February 28, 2018, according to the finance director's report.
Support.
Now, that was close. Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah. Good call, Mayor.
All right. I tried to share. Any discussion? I can think of one business that's normally on the list and won't be there this year. Oh, boy. Jeez. Just saying. All right.
Roll call, maybe?
All right. Roll call.
Mayor Porten Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Porten Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our final regular agenda item this evening is item E, which is the appointment to the Board of Review. And you want to also introduce that one, Marnie?
Yes, please. We've recently had a resignation from one of the members of our Board of Review, and the board does meet in the first couple of weeks in March to consider requests from residents for review of their assessments. So we had found a young lady who was interested and willing. She didn't get back to us in time to get in the packet, but we actually found out about it after the packet was out, so that's why we're requesting it here tonight. But she... Her application has been reviewed against the job description, and she is happy to fill out that term, so we would like her to be appointed to the Board of Review for the unexpired term that ends on December 9, 2019.
Excellent. And I would just say again, this is another one of those mayoral appointments with the approval of council, but I'm certainly supportive of this relatively new but talented member of our community. If there's a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Porten Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. That concludes our regular agenda this evening, so moving on now to call to council. Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Your honor, after the Parkland tragedy, I just wanted to keep council appraised that we are meeting Wednesday with Dr. Bazey of the School Board. We are going to assess the schools yet again for safety issues. We're hoping to have a productive conversation. We also... I have reached out to Representative Wittenberg. I asked him after that meeting if we could meet together again with Dr. Bazey and maybe propose or brainstorm some legislation that may be able to statewide walk us through some protocols that we would have if we find ourselves with information of individuals that may or may not need mental health for these type of threats that have been, that we've been experiencing, particularly in the Detroit area. And also, we've been reached out to us by a group of folks that would like to assemble an ad hoc committee also to address different things that we can do for school safety. So I just wanted to make sure council is aware that we're working very diligently on this issue. Probably not going to solve it at our, but we hope to make it better.
And thank you, chief. I really appreciate you doing that. And I want to add to that, that I don't know if you're aware of this, I'm just kind of checking. A Ferndale resident by the name of Michael Williams, who's involved with the Masonics Lodge, reached out to me, said that the Lodge is interested in doing some things, including raising some funds to help with security measures and stuff, so...
By and large, your honor, it's going to take money.
Yep.
In order to have, to soften or to harden what is going to be, always going to be a soft target, there'll be a monetary component. There's just no question.
So I will put you in contact with this person if you haven't...
I have not heard from him, and I'd be happy to...
I actually forwarded his message to me. I connected him to Dr. Bazey, so she may already be aware, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. Jordan, anything from Community and Economic Development? All right. Any parking issues going on?
No.
No. HR, anything else from HR department this evening? All right, how about recreation? Yeah, always something good in that recreation.
Good evening. Just a few updates on what's happening in parks and rec. On the sports side, all of our sports are open right now, soccer, youth soccer, as well as adult softball and youth, adult softball and youth baseball, as well as girls' softball. We actually just partnered with Royal Oak Sandlot to offer a full softball league for our Ferndale youth girl softball team. Last year, we had to travel a little far, and so we're just happy to be back home and close within the area and offer this to our residents. And those are, for the softball, for the girls' softball, excuse me, that's ages nine to 18 years of age. We were recently awarded an NRPA Walk With Ease Training Grant, which trains up to four of our staff to be able to offer a walking program for seniors and really any resident, but is focused more on seniors for free. And so we are going to be rolling out that program in May. It'll start off with, each is three times a week for six weeks for the first round, and it starts off with like a 10-minute educational component about walking, health benefits, so on and so forth, and then we go out for about a 50-minute walk with cool down and stretching. So we're very excited for that. More details are to follow. And then we also have Extravaganza coming up, and this year, we've added an additional park. So we've added Marie Totlott Park in addition to the normal parks that we have at Martin Road, as well as Wilson Garbit and Geary Park. We were happy to announce that we have several city departments and city council who'll be donating Easter baskets, so whatever lucky child gets the golden egg will also get an Easter basket. And that's going to be held on March 24th, and I would like to open it up if there are any community groups out there that would also like to donate a basket. They're more than welcome to acknowledge their groups and provide that to the kids as well. I mentioned before that we were recipient of the Good Sports Grant, which is donation-based, and they donate equipment based on what our needs are. So we have placed our first order, and it was approved, so we will be receiving over $24,000 in equipment, which should include gloves, helmets, mitts, and different apparel for the kids to use, and so we're sending that paperwork off now. So that's very exciting. And that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Lorena?
One question. Do you have bocce ball equipment?
No, we don't.
Okay, I understand it was once quite enjoyed by the seniors, and maybe we want to look at that in the near future to add it for summer physical activity.
All right, great.
Yep.
Oh, I can't forget. So at Extravaganza ends at Martin Road Park, so that's the last egg hunt for the day and the biggest one, and we have the pleasure of having the Senior Bake Sale there, so make sure if you come or when you come that you stop by the Senior Bake Sale and get some delicious stuff.
And what's the date of that again?
March 24th. And the Bake Sale will be at Martin Road Park, which will be at 2:30.
Awesome. Thank you, Lorena. Appreciate it. Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor and council, we had several of our new firefighters and a couple senior fighter fighters do the 65-story climb for air for the American Lung Association. They raised about $1,700, and they were right in, just above the mean average of time and that, so about five minutes to hit 65 floors and back with full fire turnout and SCBA engagement.
Is that the one at the Renaissance Center?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, a lot of pride there for our six members, and the team's growing each year, and they're doing better each year. That's it.
That's awesome. Did you do it?
Yeah.
Cheryl, anything from the finance department this evening? All right. Cara, anything from community engagement and communications?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? Of course, there's always something from DPW.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say it's been a privilege working for the city of Ferndale, and I'm thankful to have had the opportunity. And so, all the residents that might be watching, you know, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm sure the city will carry on and the department will carry on very well.
This is not your last meeting, is it?
Yes, yes.
This is?
It is.
What?
Lloyd has taken a new position with the city of Northville.
Yes, but I thought that was coming up, I thought that was in the future, I mean...
Yeah, no, this Friday is last day.
Holy, okay.
Wish him the very best. In time, Carlos Kennedy will take over as interpreter.
Yeah.
Well, best of luck in your new adventure.
Thank you.
I knew it was coming, I didn't know so fast, Lloyd. Okay, I apologize, I didn't realize this was your last meeting, so we'll chat about you in a minute. All right, Joe, anything from the assistant city manager's office? All right. Marnie, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. Howard April, anything from the city manager's office? Okay. Dan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
The only thing I would say is to thank you, Lloyd, for your service. It's been nice having you here, so I wish you well.
Two things. First, thank you, Lloyd. I remember you showing me around, all the DPW ins and outs when I was the first elected, so I really appreciate that and you'll be missed, but Northville is gaining gems, so thank you. For the schools, March 23rd, the schools are having a March is Reading Month at the Ferndale Upper Elementary. And if you've not done that before, that is when you go into the schools and read through the classes, so it's an enjoyable experience. If it's something you would like to do, I suggest you reach out to Ferndale Upper Elementary, to the principal, Katie Jeffrey, and that number is, the number to the school is 248-547-0880. So it's a wonderful event and you would enjoy it, so. I plan to do it, I do it every year.
I do as well, it's an absolute blast.
Yes.
Excellent. Mayor Potem Polika?
I just want to thank Lloyd for his service to, to our city. It has been truly a pleasure working with you. You have always been very attentive. Anytime there was something that came up, you, you know, you were right there to handle it.[1720.26]